I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and in the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to the roll call.
Mayor, City Councilmember.
President.
Councilmember Richard Orpen.
Here.
Ritz-Mordell.
Here.
Chris McLeish.
Here.
Tim Brown.
Here.
Item number three, tonight I would like to make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with one change. People here have a lot of questions about what's going on. What I'd like to do is take item 6A and move it before item 5. And then after the presentation, then they can speak.
Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion that we adopt tonight's agenda with that change.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion before I call for the question? All those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda with the change on item 6A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I will now entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Some who approve.
Mr. Brown approves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Orpen. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none? All those in favor of tonight's consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to item 6A, the MS4 storm water fee presentation. Jared?
Good evening, great councilmembers of the public. Jared Bogey, city engineer. Tonight, I have a short presentation regarding some facts and material associated with the MS4 permit and the requirements associated with the permit. First, a few definitions for background information. As it relates to stormwater, essentially stormwater is everything water, whether it comes from rain, snow melt, or surface drainage. And that's essentially everywhere within the watershed, whether it be in the city, the rural areas of town, everywhere. That's the definition of stormwater as it is defined by the MS4 permit. Industrial stormwater, simply as the name implies, stormwater from industrial areas, whether that's outside storage, industrial uses, things of that nature. Construction stormwater, that's stormwater from construction sites, whether it be road projects, grading projects, commercial construction, residential construction, all those types of projects. And then the municipal separate storm sewer system is where we get the acronym MS4 from. And that's basically the definition listed up there. I'm not going to read it, but that's where the acronym comes from. So one of the questions that's most frequently asked is why MS4 and why now? Essentially, the MS4 program was federally enacted legislation. The feds dictated that ownership to the EPA. And subsequent to that, that authority was passed down to states within the United States. Minnesota, in our case, delegated that authority to the MPCA. And the MPCA is essentially charged with the MS4 permit requirements and the annual stormwater permit fees associated with that is also dictated by state statute. Some information about what qualifies a community to become or to have the MS4 designation, essentially it's based on the primary components are associated with population. As you can see on the screen this evening, a population of 10,000 or more is designated as MS4. Once you get below that 10,000 population threshold, there's other items that come into effect with that. Communities and populations of at least 5,000. And the other three items listed up there, discharging to an outstanding resource value water. That particular norm is important for the city of St. Francis because of the Rock River's designation as an outstanding resource value water. Charles streams and lakes and then waters listed as imperious also triggers, if you will, that require MS4 designation per the MPCA guidelines. And then other contributors to the loading, pollutant loading, some existing MS4. For example, state universities, the colleges are also MS4s. The Minnesota Department of Stormwater Transportation is an MS4. The other factors that contribute to it are high growth potential, high population densities, or seasonally high population. For example, some of the lake communities have seasonally high population. They might not meet that threshold for all months of the year, but approach those thresholds. And then established or approved TMDL is also a requirement for some MS4 communities. A TMDL is the acronym for total maximum daily load. It's essentially the maximum amount of a component that can be included within a water. There's a lot of TMDLs going around the state right now, but that doesn't necessarily apply to us at this point. So why is a city applying for the MS4 permit? Essentially, cities are required to apply by law. It's a requirement of MPCA. The statute is up there this evening and defines that last year in 2015, the city received a letter from MPCA informing us of our status of a MS4 community. And as part of that process, the city submitted Part 1 of the permit. And the next step in that process is preparing Part 2 and submitting that prior to the October 25th, 2016 deadline. Now, federal legislation was enacted in 1987 establishing this process through the Clean Water Act. By the time the EPA delegated it to the states, the state of Minnesota determined that MPCA was going to be their agency that enforced and supported the compliance with the requirements. The first permit was actually issued in June of 2002. And then the first draft of MS4 permits in 2003. The permit typically is on a five-year renewing cycle. So in 2006, the permit was renewed and not again in 2013. You might say, well, why is it 2013 instead of 2011, five years after 2006? That's simply because of the changes at the federal level regarding the Clean Water Act and additional requirements being distributed to the cities. One of the important things to note about that, and it's in the last item there, the focus has really shifted over the course of this MS4 permit process from program development to implementation. Really what that means is that before, MPCAs seemed to be really concerned with the program development. Here we have the federal government, they're telling us that we need to implement these rules and requirements, let's get this implemented. Now, they're actually taking a closer look for all the existing permissions plus the new ones, which St. Francis is a part of, and really focusing on that implementation part and making sure that the requirements of that permit are satisfied as part of the process. As I previously mentioned, it is a federal requirement. Currently, there's 260 cities or agencies within the state of Minnesota that have this designation. As part of the 2003 process, some of the more local cities are identified out there. And then in 2013, 27 additional MS4 communities or agencies were added to that list and those similar or relatively close to the area are listed there being a standing one. With the costs associated with the MS4 process, there is a $400 permit fee that's required every time the permit is updated. The costs associated with the implementation vary significantly from one community or one MS4 to another as a result of the different stormwater resources within that agency or community. Information provided by other MS4s or communities seems to indicate the additional staff time of approximately 25 to 1 full-time equivalent staff members is typically needed. So for reference, that's approximately 2040 to 2080 hours of additional staff time just associated with this permit process. And again, some of the factors associated with the impact of that cost are listed up there. So what's required to comply with the permit? There is an annual recording process associated with the permit. Essentially, that process documents what the city does on an annual basis to comply with those permit requirements. There's annual inspections associated with storm sewer, catch bases, dishes. Discharges leaving and entering the site, essentially water, no matter where it comes to the city or the perimeter of our boundaries, those discharges need to be identified and inspected. Also requires inspection of stormwater ponds on a five-year basis. Currently, the city does do inspections on stormwater ponds, but certainly we do not get to all of them on a five-year basis. So it's a more frequent inspection process associated with these requirements. The ordinances, since it is a new requirement, the ordinances, the existing ordinances do not meet the requirements of the MS4 permit. And as a result, those ordinances will even go through. Enforcement procedures are also kind of tied in with those ordinances. What happens if somebody doesn't comply with the MS4 permit requirements? And those requirements will be included in those ordinances. And they must be documented, kept on file for a period of time, indicated by the permit. With anything new, there's always training associated with that. Our staff will have to be trained in these MS4 permit requirements, specifically as it relates to inspections, documentation, and things of that nature. And then the annual meeting, as I mentioned earlier, is required and the appropriate notifications and everything that's associated with that. Similar to what the previous slide talked about, the stormwater utility fee is being used for essentially complying with those requirements. The items listed up there are very similar to those that we just went through. And as I mentioned, currently, some of these activities are being done, there's no question about that. Right now, we have high priority areas within the community that we know stormwater is an issue. Those are inspected and monitored on a frequent basis. However, as a result of the permit requirements, essentially that priority needs to be expanded to every storm sewer system, whether it be a ditch, a pipe, a culvert, a catch basin, or anything within the community. Street sweeping, currently the city does sweep streets, but as a result of the MS4 requirements, additional street sweeping will be required, there's no questioning about that. The high priorities, as we talked about, areas will again become everything within the community instead of just specific locations. Also, as part of that, stormwater improvements are included. That can range from ditch maintenance, pipe maintenance, or the maintenance associated with a construction project. For example, if a roadway is reconstructed now with MS4 permit requirements, perhaps rather than in the past, simply putting in catch bases and pipes to take care of that stormwater, now there's additional treatment measures that are going to be required as part of that construction project process. And then the last two items listed up there this evening, public education and development programs, you're, for example, we should kind of tie together. But during the following years and as the city continues to implement the MS4 permit as required, there will be additional information posted about ways to prevent pollution. Currently, the city website has some of that information on it already. So that's basically an overview of the MS4 permit process, Mayor. And with that, I would stand for any questions as it relates to the requirements associated with the permit.
Council, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bogey?
I have a few. How is this different than the watershed management that we currently have in this area?
Right. Currently, the watershed management plan is a plan implemented by the Upper Rock River Watershed Management Organization. However, the Upper Rock River Watershed Management Organization is not necessarily an MS4 entity. They're essentially the watershed which comprises more than just the city of St. Francis. It's basically everybody within that watershed, you know, some of the communities included in there, Oak Grove and others, they have requirements. And the city has complied with those requirements, but those requirements don't meet the MS4 requirements. And currently, the Upper Rock, as I'm sure you're well aware of, is a representative of the board. The Upper Rock is actually looking at updating their watershed management plan. One of the comments the staff provided to them during that process was, we have communities within the watershed that are MS4 communities. Let's make sure that your requirements coincide with these requirements and are not more impactful or require additional stuff in addition to this stuff that we already recorded to you by MS4.
Okay. And then, I guess this wouldn't be for, it might be for one of the other staff, but why was the bill put out all at once and imposed of being put on the taxes and being spread out over to at least two payments? Do we have it unanswered?
I answered that. And I did call the county and ask to put it all on all parcels. We have no authority to do that. The only authority we have is to put it on if it's not paid at the end of the year.
Okay.
So we can special assess it at the end of the year.
But otherwise, it has to be sent out in the manner in which it was?
Yeah. We can't just go upon the parcels to the county and say, put $60 on every person.
Okay. And then, what is the, he said some of the things that we're required to do are already doing?
Mm-hmm.
Now, is that money that we're using for that going to be diverted to other things? Or do we need the money that from the MS4 bill and the money that we're already spending to meet the MS4 requirements?
The thing, like street sweeping and stuff?
Yeah.
That was being paid for by the general fund and now these, those costs have moved over to the stormwater fund.
So there will be additional funds in the general fund for other city projects?
Yes. That's how the city did not raise any taxes.
Okay. And then is there any chance that there could be a surplus with the $60 and the fees could be reduced in the future? Or is it, what would happen with the budget if it just keeps building and building?
Well, the city council would get to see that at any point, see what the fund balance is in the fund. But if we start talking about having to do construction projects and stuff like that, you're going to run through a lot of spies, usually.
And then as far as the oversight for this MS4 money, is it all the city council or is there another body? And then in addition to that, how are the annual meetings going to be done?
I can't speak to the annual meetings. The funds are within the city. They'll be held here, it'll be run just like our other enterprise funds, you know, our liquor fund, our water fund, our sewer fund. So you'll see those statements come out and we write the odds.
Okay.
And the annual meeting.
Councilmember Orpen, the annual meeting process associated with the MS4 requires a public notice so that residents are aware of the annual meeting. And essentially what it does is it goes through that, the annual report that needs to be submitted to the MPCA and says what activities have been completed over the previous calendar year, what is anticipated for coming up in the following annual review. So there is flexibility with the public meetings typically. Most communities have been holding them at city council meetings. Some have done it at their city celebration days, posted the notice, had information about that. There's some flexibility associated with that, but most often times it's done at city councils.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Skirdal?
When I was doing a little bit of research to respond to some of your questions, was I right when I look at the fee schedules of places like Ramsey, Andover, Anoka, communities are already MS4 communities? I mean, we're not obv, we're not, if I read their fee schedule, right, they charge stormwater fees to fund a fund to do this kind of stuff in their communities, right? So this isn't unprecedented, correct? I'm reading their schedule right?
Yes.
Alright, thanks. That's the only question I have.
Mr. McLeish?
Question for Darcy here. Is there another method of payment that the citizens can pay instead of doing it by check?
Yeah, they can come into city auditorium, down to city hall, we can take a credit card fee, but with that, there is a fee associated with taking a credit. But they can do that.
That's for Darcy. Now, we have opportunity of tax rebates, a lot of citizens do. At the April, you apply for, you get a state rebate in August generally. Can this in the future be built into the taxes? So there's at least some advantage for that?
When we did the lottery plan, you know, we kind of looked at it, if we spread it on the taxes, there, you know, it could have been done that way, but that would be spread a little bit differently, like some of the commercial and industrial would have a lot more in the taxes than residential. And we had decided that this was an all over, you know, every parcel was contributing to this and that we wanted to get the same fee from everybody.
Does anyone else have any questions? I have just one for Financial Director. If somebody wants to break the payments up over a few months, is that a possibility?
Yeah. If they bring in the payments, we just have to, we have to know the PID numbers so that we can associate it with that and we'll track it that way. You know, this is, it does say it's not due until June 1st. We put that on there, we're going to send a reminder notice around June 1st. The next thing will be special assessments come September, you know, they get a notice that they have to give by then. So they have until sometime almost into November before it's going to actually get special assessed on their numbers. They have a lot of time to get.
Anyone else? Thank you. Good presentation. All right, we'll move on to item 5, meeting open to the public. Ladies and gentlemen, you get three minutes to speak to us and tell us your thoughts. When you come, when you're called, come up to the podium, state your name and address, please. Hey, Barb?
First person, Mike Blood.
This will be the timer for you.
Good evening, everyone. I came out here about the MS4. And while I was going to ask, some of the answers, questions have been answered, but my first one is, do you know where you're going to start with this program?
Mr. Bogey, do you know where we're going to start with this program?
Yeah, the first step in this program is developing the permit application and the stormwater pollution prevention plan, which basically describes the process as to how the city is going to comply with the requirements of the MPCA. So if the question's related to, is there a specific area of town or location that has not been identified at this point?
Well, I'd like to put our Kitcher addition in as a primary target for this program. The infrastructure out there is non-existent. Fifty years ago, when that area was developed, it just burned down, the roadways were put in, it has not been touched since, one exception. I had to threaten the city council with a lawsuit before they came out and did so. It is my property, it has the work of the easement for the drainage for over a mile. A square mile is what they estimated. That drain drains. But right now, that drain is only servicing one, me. We know that all of those culverts no longer exist. There are no ditches. Our yards are polluted, houses are getting water in the basement, there are no drains. I know we're kind of forgotten out there, but we are part of the community. That's really all I have to say. And up to this point, in 2010, when the city engineer and his crew came up and did the repair work necessary to run the city easement, I agreed with a handshake that I would do the maintenance on. To view these new charges that I will be paying, even though it costs more than $60 a year to do the maintenance, I'm not going to do it anymore. So I will expect to see the crews out here to continue the maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bogey. Mr. Bogey, take note of that property, please.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing this time to speak. And Bob also, my wife and I are in the rural part of this village. There really are parts of this village, there's a rural part and a residential part, or commercial part, as I call it. And I am here to speak for ourselves and neighbor that couldn't be here tonight. We live in Sandy County in Orlando, the village of St. Francis. And we have no recourse as far as having input into this collection of the money because we can't vote in St. Francis to hold people accountable for decisions they make. And we can't go to a tax meeting to discuss the mill rate or the assessment value of the property. So this is something that truly, truly being tasked with our representation or ability to represent ourselves, we have to speak in a place like tonight. We're concerned with the method of collection and who's being charged for this because half of this township is rural on the other side of city book and contributes more water to the residential area of town here. Any water that would leave our area goes down city book into another township. And we do a lot of conservation stuff. My wife and I have been recognized as county and regional conservation partners of the year. We build our own water retention ponds and we have upper strips of mine that flow water that could flow through our property. And it seems to me like this bill should be assessed against the people who contribute to the pollution. Also, the other point I wanted to make was that you should have specific projects that were painful before you give us additional patents. were paid before you give us additional taxes. If you wanted to build a stormwater retention pond, it costs $30,000, that should be in the budget. You have no budget, you're collecting money and saying, trust me, we're going to use it wisely. And although the people sitting at this table, you know, have made long-term decisions in the past, listening to the St. Francis City Council, say, trust me, we will make good decisions, that's been a bad idea for a lot of the public. I think this 170-some thousand dollars you want to collect is going to be relatively expensive. Public relations movement that you could have until you link your own work to show what you can specifically use it for, and not transfer funds back into the general fund or any bills. I appreciate you, Mr. Steve. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them either in the office or if you need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz Fairbanks. Good morning. My name is Liz Fairbanks, 24360 Yukon Street in St. Francis, of course. Now, I've been trying to study this, I'm new to a lot of this, but being that I'm new, it's also fresh eyes, fresh ears. I am concerned about a lot of things, and I'm going to try to sum this up as easy as can as I can. First of all, we're asking for $60 per parcel and/or per household when I have friends of mine who actually don't own their land, but they own the structure that's on the land, and they're getting double dipped. Not only are they having to pay this $60 that you require us, but so does the owner of that land. That's doubling. And then I do remember, Steve Mice also said from MPC says, we told us not to rack up refunds on facilities, but help meet the facilities in compliance. Okay, then, how come our finances and our bills and our taxes keep jumping if our goal was to not up these things? I'm concerned about that. As well as, why are we having a $180,000, $60, or sixty, or the total of $180,000, excuse me, for the $60 per parcel plan? And the current is actually $400? I understand we need to pay people to help do these things, but what about the people who actually own their land and do clean their stuff, like me and other people that I know? I'm not going to pay for this, I'm taking care of my property. And why do I have to pay the city of St. Francis? Why do I have to give you guys my money when I don't know what the hell you're doing? With it? When it's supposed to be a company or state thing? Why can't I pay the state? I'd rather pay the state. It makes more sense. And then I'm also, I was also doing some reading, and I hear there's some bids for Pedersen Drive to be redone. What else do you guys want to throw at us? There's going to be no growth in this town if you guys keep screwing things up. We've got to do one thing at a time. Because as a community, people want to stand together, but doing this kind of stuff, you're going to tear us all apart, and we're going to argue, like neighbors. So I have to pay. Joe Merrill. I do need your advice, though, I have the rest coming.
My name is Joseph Merrill, 24360 Yukon Street, St. Francis. I have a couple of issues to speak on. One's the MS4 permit, which I am going to be talking to Kurt Dowd tomorrow. And how the MS4 agreement, which my wife just pointed out, about permits $400 and why is this going to get brought back into the general fund? So some of these issues need to be addressed with the city council. We got two roundabouts going on, all right? I understand meaning one, which I understand clearly because it's obviously a traffic officer. And I also talked to Matt Look, the county commissioner, which he exactly pointed out that could have been stopped. All the city council had to do was say, no, we don't want it. But you guys didn't explore any other options. And then you have a $40 million wastewater treatment plant. Is it, is it?
Twenty.
Twenty? Twenty. Regardless of the fact. But still, I mean, you've doubled people's water bill, which there's going to be another increase in November. It is insanity, okay? I grew up in Coon Rapids, I moved up here to get away from the bureaucracy that's down there, not up here. I went to a hearing, councilman, Mr. Mayor, to speak out against a gas amendment that they wanted, you had to prepay before you went in. That left immediately. They didn't, they didn't take advice of the people, they didn't do anything. They wanted to do what they wanted to do, and I see this council doing the same thing. And I think you need to listen to the people that are going on above the community. I mean, they're here to give you guidance, you're supposed to represent us as a people, not your own personal agendas. And that's how I feel on the subject. And if I have to come up here at every meeting to babysit and hold hands to make sure you're not spending money and taking money from the people of St. Francis to put it into a general fund, so be it. And if I have to run for councilmember, I will do it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'd like to make one point clear up. The money that's being collected for the MS4 does not go into the general fund, is that correct, Darcy?
That's correct.
It's got its own fund, so. Okay, Barb?
Rachel.
Mr. Joe.
And Rachel, 23725 Naxxey Street, Yelker, I'm really not here to talk on this part, I want to be in on the, they call it change of the charter. I have one, one thing, can anyone tell us what kind of hard money that we have to give via this $60 payment?
Darcy?
In other words, how many parcels do we have of this total of hard money being generated? And, Darcy, you made a statement that it's not going to be used in the general fund, but it will offset some of the funds for the general fund because it's going to do the street sweep.
Yes, like I said.
It will do that. But it's not put a check in there, so give me a comment where it's going to be spent. I want to make my effort.
Mark Holton.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. First off, I've got to say this, if someone wants to come and do a study of my property...
Could you give your name and address, please?
2548243, Avenue of Las. First off, we might spend some money, you can send somebody up to my property, my parcel, and check there's one drop of water off of my property going somewhere else. Now, I understand some of this is for greater good for other properties, but I'm just making it clear, there are some properties that don't follow the laws, that do the stormwater system. I might contribute one drop, one of these studies, but I take my pride, I take some pride in never staying informed of what was going on in my community. Somehow I missed this one. When I received the postcard, my first reaction was, it must be a mistake. So I pulled up my city of St. Francis spring news letter, nope, not from there. Went online and looked at the city website. On the city website, I found a reference to the MS4 invoice notices with a brief explanation and referral to the MPC website. I went to the MPC website. The only thing I could find pertinent was a general MS4 permit, which was 33 pages of lawyer, engineer bureaucratic language, which I doubt even the office understood. So I thought to myself, surely something this important, which warrants a special postcard from St. Francis, must have been discussed at the city council meetings. So I went to the city website, we could find nothing in the agendas for minutes, all the way back to October of 2015. On Monday, I called and spoke with the city public works director, Paul Teicher. I would like to thank Paul for taking the time, gave my call, and shutting some light on the MS4 process. Paul also offered that there was an article about the MS4 in the city winter newsletter. So I followed my city winter newsletter, indeed, on page three, there was an article. However, even after reading the article again, I found the one sentence ending bad and uninformative, as it did not specify if this was for a new parcel or even what constituted parcel. I did see the city create a presentation, which we saw tonight in response to the poll, but I still have several, lots of questions. And in general, about the MS4 permit, I find some of these demands just ludicrous. If potash and fertilizer is harmful, then why does the MPC and state allow it to be sold in Minnesota? That's a little dangerous. If roll salt is so hazardous to the environment, why not ban it or offer some alternatives? The MPC wants to pass, plus the tax ourselves for using products, say, D and R, but they don't offer any viable solutions or don't ban. This initial MS4 process is just the tip of the iceberg, I promise you. In a couple of years, when the test results show roll salt concentrations in our holy pond, geez, I wonder how that got there, can you imagine what the expense will be to remove this hazard swain? If $60 a lot, now just wait. I cannot wait for the day when someone has the guts to tell the MPC and state, no, we will not comply. Offer some viable solutions to products such as roll salt first, and then we go comply. Next, I'd like to address the $60 per parcel question, because my understanding there are about 3,000 parcels being built for a total of about $180,000, which I don't know why nobody presents this information when we present presentations like this, but we don't even talk about the dollars. And I'd like to know, where's the research on this? Who came up with $180,000 or $60 per parcel, $50 per month? I've studied nothing, I've heard nothing, what, where did you come up with it? Just old numbers on the air? I'm looking for formal answers, not generalizations of possible uses. In conclusion, I have two main concerns. First, why do my city not think this applied building would not generate confusion, frustration, and anger? Sharing the details and specifics of why multiple outlets, multiple times, would have been helpful. Secondly, and if I mean, and if, and I mean if this tax is justified and necessary, why are we going through the time, expense, and trouble of building for this separately? I heard Darcy speak earlier about that the county won't do it, I don't believe, I wish I brought my tax statement here, but when I build separately for Anoka County Airway of Time for 911, when I build separately for order approved lettuces, non-order approved lettuces from my school district, when I build for regional transit, transit on my property taxes, I don't believe that we can't get this on our property taxes. I can't believe you folks want on our property taxes, rather than meeting your taxpayers in your angry, once a year, when the taxes come out, you want us to just up here every single time, when we build $60, are we going through the ministry, the cost of that $60? I can't imagine. When somebody has to pay, then we got to go through the process, voting against the property, et cetera. It doesn't make any sense. So I'm upset, and I hope you're nice, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Last person, Charles Martin.
My name is Charles Martin, I live at 2295 Turner Forest Avenue, Culver, Storm Rain, curb, ditch, or any of the other things listed on this slide up here that the city maintains. I live on a county road, and the county doesn't even maintain it, the only person who maintains it is me. The stormwater, as you call it, comes off into a pond on my place, or my neighbor's place. It does not go into any city grain, it does not go into the Round River, it goes into those ponds and seeps into the ground. I understand the ground water will sometimes circulate to and percolate to the Round River, but I doubt hiding that any of it from our place does. And I'm very upset with someone taking and applying a tax to me without explanation. You just sent me a card and said, I want $60 bucks. Well, I can send each one of you a card and say, I want $100 bucks, can you give it to me? That's what you're asking me to do? I don't know or have the knowledge to understand how you're going to do that. It's not within our government system. It's absolutely disheartening to the common person out here that doesn't understand us first. And yet, like Mr. Logan, I'm also upset. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, first?
That's it.
Thank you all for your comments tonight, I appreciate you coming in. All right, moving on to item 7A, Ordinance 212, Second Series Amending City Code, Chapter Six, Section Three, entitled Dances, Second Reading. I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make that motion approve.
Mr. Brown makes motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Orpin, is there any discussion before I call for the question? Yes, Mr. McClish.
Regarding the dance amendment, the city will no longer require a police officer to work these dances, but will require the applicants to hire their own security. Is someone going to make sure that they have security during those put downs to make sure they're in compliance?
Mr. Coleman?
There's a security plan that has to be submitted. They must submit a security plan that would be reviewed.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of Ordinance 214 signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Excuse me, we need to do a roll call. I always miss that one. All right, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. McClish?
Aye.
Mr. Scordel?
Aye.
Mr. Orpin?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Ordinance 215, Second Series Amending the City Charter relating to council meetings, Second Reading. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve, Ordinance 215.
Mr. McClish makes a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brown seconds. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Okay, Mr. Orpin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Scordel?
Aye.
Mr. McClish?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye. Ordinance 216, Second Series Tobacco Ordinance, Second Reading. I will entertain a motion.
Honorable mayor, can I interrupt you a minute?
Mr. Jones?
I asked if I couldn't be on on that part of it, and I get here to discuss it. And why it isn't written so the people know what the thing is in the first place?
That...
You know, I happen to know a little bit about it, but I don't know if these people want anything about it. But you have a question about it, why we're doing it, I'd like to get up there and talk about it.
I'll let Mr. Coleman ask why, or tell you why.
Sure. So...
Ask who?
Yeah. Instead of...
I will permit it, Mr. Jones.
My name is Raymond Jones, I live at 2372 Naxxey Street. So why I'm here, I'd like to know just what the charter says outside of this, this one piece of paper that I have given. And the only change I can see from that, I'll read it, chapter three, section 202, council meeting, councils will meet a first time or twice each month that may be prescribed or by brought out ordinance resolution, addition of mayor or any two council members, they call the best media that counts, that notice that may be prescribed by ordinance. I'd like to hear why we want to change it. In other words, it has to be a message of something when you do something.
Sure, if they were to change it by...
When we gain it.
So if they were to change the meeting by ordinance, it would take months to do that. By being able to change the meeting date and time by resolution, they can do it on a quicker timeline. And more specifically, I think it applies to council meetings around holidays towards the end of December, potentially the beginning of July.
All right. I took a, and looked in my checkbook, went back here to the year 2014, on July 7th and 21st of July, would be a beginning date, first 15th of December, at... Actually, there is actually no conflict between December up to Christmas that would affect you, because the earliest date you could call it, when you use the first and third, what you had been, is the 7th and 21st of December. That means the 24th is on Thursday, 27th is Friday, is your non-business income. Now, in 2016, in a second, Martin Mustard pin day, which happened to fall on January 18th, which was the date that you're meeting, which would automatically put it over to the next day anyhow. In 2016, on the 4th of July, you will have meetings, but you're not going to be able to meet anyhow. So, in other words, I've been trying to change something. If you went through the, all your dates on all the years once, this follows in history. The only thing that screws it up is that when you've got a, what do you call that, extra date of the year. But in other words, couldn't have just been made to change, in other words, if any first and second Monday, it all going to legal, the meeting will be held on the following date. It's what, add the change in the charter. I don't know, otherwise I can't see what you're doing. And maybe you're wasting time effort. Thank you.
All right, back to ordinance 216. Did we have a motion already?
I think so.
We had motion second. Okay, is there any, any further discussion on ordinance 216? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Uh, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. McClish?
Aye.
Mr. Squirdel?
Aye.
Mr. Orpen?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Ordinance 217, second series, drug paraphernalia, second reading. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll approve, ordinance 217.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. McClish. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Orpen. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Brown, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Squirdel?
Aye.
Mr. McClish?
Aye.
Mr. Orpen?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Ordinance 218, second series, amending city code, chapter two, section two, entitled council meeting time and place, first reading. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make motion approve.
Mr. Brown makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I have a second.
Mr. Squirdel has a second. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none. All those in favor, uh, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. McClish?
Aye.
Mr. Squirdel?
Aye.
Mr. Orpen?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Resolution 2016-07, writing off escrow balances for the year end 2015.
Hi. Before you enter the resolution, for the auditors, we have a bunch of escrow balances that are needed, and we'd like to write them off, just give them off the, kind of interesting, I can't do that without people approving it, because it's a common practice for things that we can't collect. We always keep the files here if we could ever find anybody to pay on, we would come out, and we have this stuff, but to get them off the books, the auditor director, and us writing them off.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for our finance director?
What, I guess, why can't we find people to pay these, assess taxes or let her?
Several years ago, I was told that they did assess everything that they could, kind of parcel associated with the projects, and we just don't have anything, any other means to project right now.
And isn't escrow, like, to put the money up front, or?
Yep, and they, they put the money up front, and then there's bills that are, I don't say from the engineers or from the planner or anything else. They are quoted to that, and they, it brings the escrow balance down, but sometimes it is negative when you try and collect it, when we can't collect it, we don't have the parcel to put it against. We don't have much else.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, Darcy. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt resolution 2016-7.
Mr. Squirdel makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McClish. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution 2016-07 signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Resolution 2016-08, authorizing the summary publication of ordinance 214, second series. I'll entertain a motion.
Brown makes motion to approve.
Mr. Brown makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McClish. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution 2016-08 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution 2016-09, authorizing the summary publication of ordinance 216, second series. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Orpen makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McClish. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution 2016-09 signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Resolution 2016-10, authorizing the summary publication of ordinance 217, second series. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve.
Mr. McClish makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Mr. Squirdel has a second. Is there any discussion before I call for a question? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution 2016-10 signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, we, doesn't look like we have any other reports from consultants or staff members, so let's go to the council members. Mr. Brown?
I did receive an email from Brad Blue from Conex Energy. I understand they're going to be mailing out their ballots this week, so they said, he mentioned in his letter here that there's only about 6% turnout for the vote, so pretty easy, just vote and mail it back in. It's for our energy.
Yep. All right, Mr. Orpen?
Nothing.
Mr. Squirdel?
Nothing.
Mr. McClish?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Mayor has nothing to report. Old business tonight? Is there any old business? Hearing none, I'll move on. Is there any new business tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have one thing, with the weather being nice, I was taking my baby on a walk in the stroller in my area. We have a really good trail system when you're irrigated with the sidewalks, except for one spot. If you, at the intersection of 235th, which is 35 mile an hour road, and Heather Street, if you want to stay on the trail and not travel 60 to 100 feet in the, in the street, you have to go over the curb and through the grass, and there's no, like, transition from the sidewalk to, I don't know what that department's called, where basically it's like a little ramp up to the sidewalk, so you can bike up there, roll, whatever, stroller. You have to go to somebody's driveway, 50 to 100 feet, in either direction in the road, if you want to continue to use the trail, the sidewalk paths that we have. And I guess I would like the city to, I don't know if I, how I get a resolution or whatever, but, or just direction, to explore what the cost would be to put that in. There's miles and miles of sidewalks, and that's the only one spot that is not friendly to pedestrians and bicyclists, and I'd like to see that changed, especially given where it's at in the community. It's right at the end of the curb in a 35 mile an hour road. It'd be nice if the pedestrian crossings was predictable and consistent, just for everybody's safety, because I, I don't know how many times I've had to just get down a sidewalk or a driveway and walk with my daughter and my new son in the street, and I don't think that's safe. I know I'm not the only one doing it, and I guess it's a council, I'd like the staff to look at that and get a, the cost of what it would be to put that in.
Council? Were you in agreement?
Yes. That's fine.
Mr. Coleman, you have direction. Is there any other new business? Yes, Mr. McClish.
Just a question for Mr. Coleman here. Apparently, right now, this, this city has two YouTube, YouTube channels. We have an old one and a new one. Is there a way we can delete our old one?
Yeah, we can look into that and see if we can't get rid of that, just clean it up a little bit.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen. We stand adjourned.